Hello, everybody. Welcome to the June 1st, 2020 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. Appreciate you joining us online and by phone or however you're watching us tonight. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will jump right into our agenda. First up is the consent docket. Tonight, councilors, we have five items on the consent docket, including some minutes of our previous meeting, acceptance of water sewer and street improvements in a North Tower Park replat, utility usements, and a renewal of our contract for fire plan review services. Is there a comment question or a motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilor Zenotti and a second from Vice Mayor Darlington. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce, we're having trouble connecting the city clerk. So can I take the roll and call the roll, please?
Yep.
Okay, Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zenotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
And Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion passes five.
Five to zero, the motion passes. The consent docket is approved. Public comment on items not scheduled for public hearings. We don't have anyone signed up tonight for public comment, correct? Okay, so we will jump down to item five, general orders. And first up, under general orders, is 5A Prairie Arts Center annual report from Dr. Rebecca Brennan.
Thank you, and I will try to keep this to 10 minutes. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. So Mayor Joyce, members of the Stillwater City Council, members of the Stillwater community. My name's Rebecca Brennan, and I live at Wild Turkey Pass Drive here in Stillwater. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you about the Prairie Arts Center where I serve as director. Prairie Arts, formerly Multi-Arts, has been managed by OSU since 2017. As an OSU-run community arts center, our central mission is to provide art classes, activities, and events for Stillwater area children and adults, and to support various OSU programs and institutions. Since we took over the management of the Prairie Arts Center in July of 2017, we have welcomed over 25,000 visitors into the facility, almost 12,000 in fiscal year 2020 alone. The dedicated and excellent full-time staff at the Arts Center consists of Megan Brussels, Community Engagement Manager since July 2017, Jen Johnson, Arts Education Coordinator since July 2019, and Missy Kaiser, Administrative Assistant since May 2018. Part-time staff includes Gary Hickerson, who's also our maintenance technician. First, I'd like to offer you a short history of the center. I am a historian, so it's sort of par for the course. In 1971, three architecture students from Oklahoma State University came up with the idea of creating Stillwater's first community arts center. Multi-Graffitis, as the center was then called, was initially housed in a drafty old barn at the edge of town. Although it had limited facilities and funding, it attracted passionate and creative individuals from throughout the community. A grant later funded the construction of a new facility on 12th Street in Couch Park, which was shared with the Senior Citizen Center for many years. Multi-Graffitis enjoyed strong support from the City of Stillwater, which became the first city in Oklahoma to hire a community arts supervisor. Over the years, many dedicated individuals from our community have served in this role. In 2001, the new building was erected on Duck Street, which is the home of the current Prairie Arts Center. In 2005, art lovers from Stillwater community formed the Friends of Multi-Arts, an organization whose purpose was to promote and support the Arts Center. And in 2012, the Friends signed a contract with the city to run the Arts Center. In 2017, the City of Stillwater voted to have OSU take over the management of the Multi-Arts Center. Now, over the last three years, we have made every effort to continue Stillwater's proud heritage of community-based arts. The name was changed to Prairie Arts Center in 2018 as a reference to our Oklahoma home and to the distinctive architecture of our building, and I should add, to avoid confusion with our colleagues at Stillie Arts, another local arts center. Year one, 2017, 2018, our very first year of operating an arts center was, to be perfectly honest, of had a very hard work, and I'm still grateful to everyone in the community who volunteered their time and efforts to clean and organize the facility. That first year, we oversaw painting and renovations throughout the building, the installation of a computer lab, purchase of equipment, data drops. I should note that OSU paid for these improvements, although my staff and I did a lot of hands-on work as well. They also received donations of equipment from OSU, including computers and cameras. We started off kind of slow with the programming, a two-week arts enrichment camp, a series of free public workshops, photography, clay, and printmaking. But it really took us until January of 2018 to roll out a full schedule of community arts events, classes, and workshops. During this initial year, I'm also proud of the fact that we renewed and expanded many relationships with organizations that had previously worked with Multi-Arts, and those relationships continue to this day. By the end of year one, we had over 100 members, and between 100 to 150 people visited the center each week. Year two, 2018, 2019. By the end of our second year, we were employing many talented artist educators from the community to teach the classes and workshops, and many of these individuals had previously offered classes at Multi-Aarts. Our hours were adjusted to 49.5 hours per week during the regular instructional year, with somewhat shorter summer hours because there was just less demand. We started the pop-up art shops in May of 2018 as a way of providing local artists the opportunity to sell their work. And between May 2018 and 2019, we worked with 68 artists and welcomed over 1,000 visitors into the center during the 16 days that the art pop-up shops were open. We also opened an art supply shop in the lobby of the Arts Center, which has become a great place to pick up lightly-used art supplies, picture frames, and yarn at very low cost. Grants and proceeds from our scholarship table have allowed us to offer a small number of scholarships to individuals in our community. Also, in year two, we hosted a series of public workshops around the theme of Stillwater community stories with visiting artist Leslie Martin. Finally, I should note, also in the second year, we greatly expanded our service to the community by offering the opportunity for nonprofit membership to local organizations. And as of December 2018, we had 182 members of Prairie Arts. Year three. The third year of operating the Prairie Arts Center has been quite successful despite the COVID-19 pandemic, which caused us to cancel all face-to-face activities and instruction in mid-March. We currently have 157 members, which is down somewhat over the previous year largely because of our COVID-19 shutdown. Also, in fiscal year 2020, and really up to March, we were averaging 1,000 people per month in the Arts Center, which is up from 359 per month in fiscal year 2019. In our third year, we've continued to provide a wide variety of arts programming for children and adults. In fiscal year 2020, we enrolled 750 students in our youth and adult classes, again, down over last year because of our shutdown, and yes, some of these individuals were certainly repeat offenders. Since July 2019, our classes have included Art Academy, which is really after-school programming, youth pottery, beginning pottery, instructional open studio where artists can go and use the pottery facilities with some basically light instruction provided, screen printing, children's cooking classes, painting, life drawing, jewelry making, basket weaving, pastels. In addition, when we ran children's summer and winter break camps, we had to cancel our spring art camp this year. And we've also been providing regularly-scheduled make-and-take activities, which are free. In addition, in 2019, we also started the Art Partners Program, in which an individual child or adult is assigned to a private instructor for a one-on-one arts experience. So just to clarify what this means, and I won't take you into any huge detail because I don't think we have time for that, but to clarify what this means in terms of instructional hours and programs, I'd like to do a brief comparison of January 2019 and January 2020. So in January 2019, the Arts Center was open for 202.5 hours, and there were 254.5 hours of scheduled art activities. About 30 of those were a make-and-take activity where you could make tea towels, but the rest were things like youth classes, Art Academy, youth pottery, art camp, 46.5 hours, other youth activities, Girl Scout troop projects, a couple birthday parties, Grand Lake Mental Health Project, Maya's Promise for another eight hours. The rest of the hours were mostly serving the adults, about 28 hours of adult classes, 16 hours of adult workshops, and 115 hours of the instructional open studio. In January 2020, we were open 199 total hours with 104.5 scheduled hours of art activities, similar to what we saw before, camps, Art Academy, pottery for children, Art Partners as well, Epic Art Class, which is our service to an online school, but we provide hands-on actual art training. Other youth events, again, Girl Scouts, Maya's Promise, and a variety of adult classes and workshops. Now, in addition to these regularly-scheduled instructional activities, and some not so regularly scheduled because the Art Partners are really, you choose somebody to work with, and that is very much self-scheduled, so it doesn't turn up on our calendar. So in addition to these instructional activities, many community groups, large and small, meet at the Prairie Arts Center on a regular basis, and we're really looking forward to welcoming them back as soon as we can. They include, it's kind of a long list, so bear with me, the Farmer's Market, the Stillwater Art Skilled, the Stillwater Service League, sleeping mats for the homeless, the Fiber Arts Club, the Cookbook Club at the Epic Charter Schools, Stillwater Public Library, we provide a bunch of workshops for them, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, Maya's Promise, the Arts and Humanities Council, the Society for Creative Anachronism, Stillwater Group Homes, Grand Lake Mental Health, Simran Quilters, Simran Quilters Guild, the Stillwater PTA, we've run a number of workshops for them, and the downtown Stillwater Cultural District. I should note that our partnership with the OSU Museum of Art has brought almost 1,000 Stillwater public school students to the Prairie Arts Center since 2017. They complete art projects based on exhibitions at the museum, and again, this does not show up on our regularly-scheduled programming. Finally, I should note that based on the community-based, community-engaged work of our 2019 visiting artist Leslie Martin, we applied for and received a grant from the Oklahoma Arts Coalition for a community-based mural project whose objective is city beautification. This project will culminate in a series of murals on and around the exterior of the Roxy Weber Housing Development here in Stillwater. It was scheduled to start this February, but of course, it's been delayed because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Tomorrow, on June 2nd, we are beginning our staged, three-day-a-week opening with a full opening scheduled for July. Summer camps have been moved online, but Art Partners instruction and limited open studio hours will be available. Social distancing measures will be in place for all activities at the Arts Center. We're really looking forward to seeing all of our art-making friends again, but it is essential that we protect our patrons during these uncertain times. And finally, in order to support the many talented artists in our community, we plan to host an outdoor, one-day pop-up shop, sort of mini arts festival, with social distancing protocols in place outside of the Arts Center in July, but more details will follow on that soon. So thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for the report, Dr. Brennan. We appreciate that, and we appreciate all the work that you've been doing at the Prairie Arts Center to provide those services to our community. Councilors, questions for Dr. Brennan?
I just wanted to say, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
You're A. You go.
I just wanted to say that our family has firsthand seen just the caliber of work that you all have done for our community. We've been involved since our kids are really little, now they're 10 and 14, and have really seen a great improvement since you all have taken over management of the facility, and we really enjoy spending time there. I've got really creative kids that love to participate. They've had the chance to be there through school programs. I'm obviously involved with Maya's Promise. I can't extend our gratitude for the inclusiveness and the services that you, just the welcome arms that you have embraced our kids with special needs at the program, and the programming that you guys have done with us has been really incredible. I know our whole entire Maya's Promise Board has been really grateful for that. And just as a citizen, I'm thankful and appreciative of that.
Thank you so much for that. That's very kind.
I don't have children here in town, so I wish they were here so they could enjoy all these activities. But as an Oak Creek community, we participated in the Stillwater Community Series, the Stories Series is fabulous. Really, really, a nice, nice opportunity that I had no idea would be so successful. And I have popped in and out on various times and found everyone to be super helpful. A number of very supportive letters have been sent, and very supportive. I do have Julie Couch's questions, a couple of Julie's Couch's questions, and actually, probably one is for staff rather than you, Dr. Brennan, and that would be the name change. And does the contract need to be updated so that is congruent with the actual name? That needs to be clarified to me. And then the other question, Dr. Brennan, is related to your note in your report that you're scheduled to renegotiate the contract in September, and how that fits in with us renewing your contract now?
Well, my understanding is that we were, because of COVID-19, we had an extension to September, but we would be delighted to continue managing the facility. I should note that I did this on a volunteer basis.
Yeah.
So this is my service to the community because I really feel very strongly about giving back.
And that's a good thing to note.
Yeah, definitely. So I would be delighted to continue in this capacity, and I have really amazing staff, and we're also very fortunate to have really great support from OSU because they're pit for the staff salaries.
Right. That's huge.
It is. I'm very, very grateful.
Yeah. Well, that helps me with those, my two questions. Thank you.
I had the same questions too, and I'm not quite sure what happened to my video. I realize I haven't had my hair cut in a few months, but for whatever reason, I'm not live. But anyway, I just want to say, I think this is probably one of the most successful and proud partnerships that the city has had with Oklahoma State University. There I am. And I just want to give a shout out because I think, as I looked at everything that you have done to try and incorporate the university and how they have expanded their arts with the museum, as well as the City of Stillwater and just the different entities around town and the public schools, I just commend you for that. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, and to that, I'll add, in addition to the myriad cultural and psychosocial benefits that this program offers our citizens, as a medical professional and the only practicing neurologist in a thousand miles, sometimes it feels like, the partnership with Dr. Harvey, with the Department of Communication Sciences Disorders, and what she's been able to do as far as community grants and the Parkinson's Association, all the work she does with those patients, I have seen firsthand in my practice, working with those patients. So there's a clear medical benefit to that as well that I think sometimes may go either unnoticed or unthought about, but rest assured, you're doing a benefit not only culturally, but medically to some of those patients that I have pleasure to see. So I certainly appreciate it as a medical professional, the things you guys are doing as well, Dr. Brennan.
Well, I mean, thank you. Again, we want to be of service to the community. That is really the mission of the Prairie Arts Center. And it's very much part of the land-grant mission of the university.
Absolutely. Thank you for your work, Dr. Brennan.
Well, thank you very much.
Your volunteer work.
Yes. I don't know that there's much more praise I can heap on at this point, Dr. Brennan, but again, we are very appreciative of this partnership. The question I usually like to ask in these discussions with our public-private partners is, what more the city can be doing? Sometimes that's a tough question because if the answer's money, that's not a great one for us right now. But to the extent of support and in terms of being a good partner in providing these services, are there places that we can improve or things that we might add?
You know, I find the city to be extremely responsive and supportive. So you've really got wonderful people. We, as a community, have wonderful people working for us in the City of Stillwater. So when we have an issue, we get response right away. So they've been really great to work with. Yeah, I would like more beautiful grounds. I would like more money to buy more equipment, but these things can wait. We're fine right now.
Well, we appreciate that. And again, I mean, it sounds like, and again, referencing the letters that we've gotten and the emails I've gotten this week from folks, very strong support and a lot of appreciative folks in town for what you're doing. So thank you for that, and thank you for being here tonight to give us the update.
Thank you.
Okay, that will move us down to item B, item 5B, under general orders, which is to extend the demolition deadline for property at 723 High Point because of an inability to get demolition bids due to COVID-19. Beth Ann, are you presenting on this item, or is Melissa?
I'm not sure. I'll defer to Mr. Dorman. I'm happy to go ahead and take it. The city manager actually had a conversation with Ms. Sorrentino, and she was requesting an additional 60 to 90 days to obtain the permits and work towards demolition. I think, under the circumstances, that's certainly something that the council should consider doing, and so that's staff recommendation.
Okay. Councilors, any questions on that item? Do we need a motion for a continuance of some kind, Mr. Dorman?
Yes.
Is there a date, a particular date, we want to extend that to? That we think that they'd be able to get it done? Is it 60 days, 90 days?
Well, if it's 90 days, that would take us into September, so probably the first meeting in September.
Okay.
I don't know that's specific. I might defer to the clerk on that.
And I think that that first meeting is Labor Day, maybe, so, but yeah, the first meeting in September. I think out of an amendment's caution, that's how I would manage it.
Okay. So I think that would be September 14 would be our first meeting in September, if I'm reading the calendar correctly.
14th would be correct.
Thank you, Teresa. Is there a motion to?
I do have one question, Mayor. What was the date that we originally met with Ms. Sorrentino about this?
February, I believe.
It was, the resolution was adopted by the City Council in February, and they had until May 24th to have the subject property structure demolished. But there was some discretion built in there for the city manager. And of course, at that time, no one contemplated the seriousness of the virus.
Okay.
Further discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve staff recommendations and stay this until the first meeting in September.
Which would be the September 14th?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilor Wedlake and a second from Councilor Jaloski to postpone that order to September 14, 2020. Teresa, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zenotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
The vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Item 5C is an update on dilapidated property at 116 South Main. Ms. Child?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular item is a little bit more complex. After the initial resolution was approved by the City Council, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Bedayan, and he advised me at that time that there was a lice pendant basically attached to numerous properties that he owns. I had an occasion to follow up with him last week because we sent letters to all of the affected property owners on advising them of the deadline that had been established by the City Council, and he put me in contact with an individual who has made an offer to purchase this particular property. I did have an occasion to speak with him at length today. This individual does own properties in the vicinity. His plan is to handle acquisition of the property and work out an agreement with the gentleman that holds the lice pendants to where at closing, that particular debt would actually be satisfied, thereby alleviating some of the concerns of Mr. Bedayan. Part of the idea is that they would level not one structure, but both of the structures on this particular parcel, and consider development of two-story with retail on the bottom and residential on the second floor. I did have an opportunity to talk to individuals in development services, and I think that that's workable. So as long as there's a plan in place. Now, of course, we certainly, from a staff perspective, want to ensure that this thing remains on track. So they haven't closed on the property yet. I was advised that they're hoping to close within 30 days after an agreement is signed. My understanding is that this is a cash transaction, so there won't be any need to go through the usual financing processes. So at this time, I just want to let you know that's where it was. I see that it's not an action item, so I will follow up with them and ensure that we update you again next month at the first meeting, and I will keep Mr. Dorman advised so that he can provide updates on that.
Okay, certainly, a new development there would be a big bonus and a win for that area. So hopefully, we can get something like that to happen. But yeah, looking forward to that update.
Thank you.
And I appreciate this one. Councilors, any further questions on item C?
I have just one. That property, and forgive me, my memory is not what it used to be. Is that property located within the Stillwater redevelopment district?
I believe that's right. I actually emailed Mayor earlier, and so I do know that there's a lot more flexibility.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Beth Ann. We'll move down to item 5D, approve of following service agreement extensions with the Museum of History at the Sherar Center, Friends of Lake McMurtry, Stillwater Area Sports, Prairie Arts Center, Payne County Youth Services, and Tiny Paws. Mr. McClinney?
Evening, Mayor and Council. John McClinney, Special Projects. We have several annual service contracts where we partner with community organizations to provide services to the citizens. First up is Sherar Museum, that we're asking for a one-year extension for $15,000 contract, and they provide public education and tourism through exhibits, records, and artifacts. Next is the Lake McMurtry Friends, and that would be an extension through August 30th. There is no money associated with that extension. We did, however, allow them to borrow a city mower so that they would not have to buy one to get them through the summer. They provide operation management, programming, and maintenance. Next is Stillwater Area Sports Association, and that is an extension through August 30th. Contract price is $26,000. They provide recreation, competitive sports, and maintenance of our sports facilities. The next one that you've heard about tonight is the Prairie Arts Center, and we're asking for a three-year extension. It involves no direct payment by the city. We do provide the utilities. I will mention that that's a $60,000 a year savings over what the contract and city management of that facility has cost us in the past. They provide programs related to arts, education, display, exhibition, studio services, and routine maintenance of the building. Next is Payne County Youth Services, and that's a one-year extension, $15,000 contract. They accept eligible youth from the Stillwater Police Department for placement, counseling, guidance, education, and shelter for temporary housing. And then last is the Tiny Paws Kitten Rescue. That is actually a lease. We're asking for a one-year lease extension. They pay us $850 per month in rent by contract. However, the renovations that they made to the facility when we started this cover their rent payments through 2024. So, they renovated the building in lieu of paying us rent. And staff recommends a motion to renew the surface agreement, service agreements for fiscal year 21 and authorize the mayor to sign the documents.
Thank you, John. Councillors, questions or comments on these items?
I do have a couple of questions, John. I imagine you were listening before about the confusion of the name of Prairie Arts and the contract for extension of multiarts.
The original, the original contract was listed as the Multi-Art Center. The city's always called it the Multi-Art Center, and I would have to ask Mr. Dorman if there's an issue with that, but I'm sure that we could correct it if we need to.
The contract that entered into us back in July of 17 did provide for the use of a particular name, but that name was confusing because there was another facility that was in town. And it's my understanding that they came to staff and had a discussion about using the other name. No one, until this came up literally today in the context of a letter from Ms. Couch, this is the first time I'd heard of it. And so, no one had objected to it. And so, it's certainly nothing that would preclude the city from entering to an additional term with them. I do have a question, though, since we're on this particular one. My understanding is that they're up for a 90-day extension, and that we would, are still trying to negotiate the terms with them. That's what I understood Professor Brennan to be saying, and the document that's out there right now, the one that we prepared, is for a 90-day extension to September 1. So, I'm not sure that the three-year extension is what is being asked for tonight, or at least that's not what's been noticed.
I think the three-year extension is a document that's on the agenda. I know that the OSU and the city manager have had some discussions, but we can defer that if it needs to be corrected.
The document on the agenda in the packet is for a three-year extension through June of 2023.
Well, let me check. Okay, because the one they gave me says that it would, that it was to September 1. So, I don't know. I mean.
Well, I think.
All candor, when my staff did this, I did not have any input in it. So I don't know, but I will have to check. And that may be why there's, why you're hearing two different things, because I think that's what, my understanding was that this was one that was being held until, along with the other private, public-private partnership agreements that we, that were, had expired this year.
Okay. Should we, should we table that specific agreement to two weeks from now so that we can ensure the name's right and the date's right and everybody's on the same page?
That would probably be preferable, just because of the confusion.
Okay.
I did have a question regarding that one, though. Is that, is that contract any different in terms of our typical agreement with them is to just supply utilities?
It has, because it's a lease agreement, there are some provisions in here where we do utilities, which are not typical in lease agreements. Normally, when we do leases, they're, they're basically triple-net type leases, where they provide all of the utilities. They pay the taxes. They pay any insurance and stuff on it. In this instance, because we're dealing with a public entity, two of those components are not in there. So, we do provide the utilities, and then, of course, the building is, because it's a public building, it's a public entity that's leasing it, we're not requiring them to provide insurance on the structure itself.
Any other questions about Prairie Arts?
We're going to wait two weeks to get this straightened out?
Yeah, I think, I think we should. I think we need to make sure we've got everybody on the same page here in terms of what the term is and whether we're, because I think there's a question about whether this is being renegotiated in the fall or extended on the current terms, and then we need to make sure the names are right. So, yeah, I would suggest we should, we should, we need a motion to table item 5D for to June 15. I suppose I can make that motion, right?
Well, you could, or actually, if you could approve the other items without this one, and then it just carries over to the next agenda. Since it's not a public hearing item, you don't actually have to.
Okay.
I would like to make it, make a note, Mayor, that this has nothing to do with Prairie Arts Center.
No. No, agreed. Yeah.
Our staff get on the same page.
Yes. I think that's just to clarifying, making sure we're all on the same page in terms of the terms and the dates and that sort of thing. But no, I agree. It's not a, certainly not a concern with, with the management of the Arts Center at all. Questions about the other items, the other contracts?
I just had.
I would like to make mention.
Pat, we're all over. Go ahead. I got first last time. You go first this time.
Okay. I would like to make a point of thanks to Friends of Lake McMurtry for agreeing to accept the loan of the mower in lieu of cash money. I'm wondering what, what would their original cash be? Do you have that?
Off the top of my head. Yeah, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but I can, I can get that and send it to you.
Okay. Well, I do think the Friends of Lake, Lake McMurtry is a super important recreational opportunity, nature opportunity, mental health opportunity, physical health opportunity that we overlook because it's way out there that way. And they are doing really a lot of work to, to be connected to the, to the community. So, I really do appreciate their waylaying their, their cash money. I do hope that everybody who's listening will rush out and buy a membership to Friends of Lake McMurtry and any of these other organizations. That's how they're going to be able to operate to some degree by individuals supporting them with membership fees.
You know, I would also just make the point that both of those contracts that we're extending through the first of September with Lake McMurtry and with SASSA are both because of the uncertainty around COVID's effect on our city budget. And they are both fairly large contracts, six-figure contracts in terms of annual payment to those organizations to do what they do. And so, we wanted, what we asked is for them to give us a couple more months to figure out where we're going to be from an economic perspective. And yes, big thanks to both SASSA and, and the Friends of Lake McMurtry to work with us economically to figure out what they needed to exist until the beginning of September, when we can decide what our financial position looks like and be in a better position to move forward on a, on a yearly contract amount. So, we do, you know, I think with both of those, I think people need to understand that we, we're not, those are not short contracts for any reason other than the uncertainty around the money. And, and we need to get a handle on what our budget's going to look like before we can move forward on, on longer-term extensions with both of those entities. So, we appreciate their willingness to, to deal with this economic uncertainty with us. And, you know, SASSA's running sports leagues this summer. They've got games starting up today. You know, so they're, they're pushing forward with, with a fraction of what they would normally be getting from a contract from us, as well as the Friends, doing what they do, and provide that fantastic service with just a mower to show for it for the next couple of months. So, certainly, we'll do everything we can from a budget perspective to make sure that they're able to continue to provide those services into the future.
That was, I wanted to point out, too, is that we have some, what differences are here in these extensions or these contracts based on the COVID response? Are there any other, I mean, the ones that we're extending longer, are there, are there any adjustments to their numbers, or is it just those two that we're looking at that have the shorter term contract through September?
It's just, it's just those two. The others are, are annual agreements that we're just extending for one year as they were originally written.
Okay.
Okay. Councillors, is there, it sounds like items 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6 potentially could use a motion? I assume we can do those as a group? Mr. Dorman? Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve the following service agreement extensions with 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
Second. A motion from Vice Mayor Darlington and a second from Councillor Jalowski to approve those five contracts, 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6, under item 5B. Teresa, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, those annual contracts are approved, and we'll look forward to seeing a revised extension with the Multi-Art Center next meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, may I make another comment about that?
Please.
Friends of Lake McMurtry and the Sports Association, you know, because of COVID, they're, you know, we're having to hold back because of city revenue. But also, because of COVID, these outside activities, these areas for outside activities are so important and so valuable to the entire community, that I, you know, I just want to keep that in, in our, the front of our minds, and encourage people to participate in the sports activities and use the facilities at the lake.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. That takes us to item 5E, bid recommendation for upgrade of the aviation gas system at Stillwater Regional Airport. Mr. Prigle?
Good evening. Paul Prigle, Airport Director. Tonight, the first item I have for you is, kind of goes back a ways, back in June of 2019, the Airport Authority and City Council approved and accepted a $200,000 grant from Phillips 66 to cover an upgrade to our current aviation gas system. We have two fuel, fuels that we sell at the airport. We have AvGas, aviation gas, which is for our smaller planes, and then the jet fuel. And so, this is for the AvGas system. That is pretty old and is in need of replacement. If you'll recall, we went out to bid back in late winter, early spring, and received one bid. It was considerably over what we had anticipated. And so, on March 2nd, we brought that item to you for review, and it was decided to reject that bid and put it back out for bid. So, on May 6th, we opened bids again. This time, we had four bidders. Three of them were all within just a very close ballpark of each other. Ultimately, Innovative Fueling Solutions of Amarillo, Texas was the low-qualified bidder at $250,608.48. We reviewed the specifications along with the bid that they submitted and, and feel that they are the best low-qualified bidder for us. Note that there is a shortfall comparatively to the, the grant that we received. We have identified funds internally within the airport's operating budget this year. We had about $40,000, well, over $40,000 in a contingency fund that we had set aside just for unexpected expenses. And we had also, as every department did in the, in the wake of COVID, had taken our budgets and really scraped them down into what we call a COVID contingency fund. And so, we had, we, we pulled over $14,000 back out of that, back into this project so that we could fund this. I will say that I have had conversations recently with Phillips, and they are working currently with us to secure some additional grant funding. Their budget year works a lot like the federal government, so they're starting until October 1st. And so, they did, they were very promising on, we think about $80,000 more dollars that will not only reimburse us for this amount to make the bid, but we also have some pretty extensive work that needs to be done on the entry road into the fuel farm. That's where all the semis use. And so, we're hoping to secure that additional grant within the next couple of months and bring that to you as well for an acceptance. But for now, we do have the funds to cover this. It is our request that the award of the AvGas system be to Innovation Fueling Solutions.
Thank you, Paul. Councillors?
Motion to award the bid to upgrade the AvGas system of the airport to Innovation Fueling Solutions.
Second.
A motion from Councillor Wedlake and a second from Councillor Zanotti. Teresa, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington? Vice Mayor Darlington? Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that bid recommendation is approved. Item 5F, a bid recommendation for the South Apron Reconstruction. Mr. Prigle?
All right. As you all are aware, last year, we began the first section of our multi-year apron reconstruction at the Stillwater Regional Airport. And in your packet, you'll find a program sketch, and you'll see on the far right, there's a gray area that is currently under construction. And on the far left, there's a red section that is the south phase, and that is what we just completed bid for. And so, we went out to, to bid April 22nd, 2020. We opened bids with five bidders submitting. And of those bids, Do-It Construction was the low-qualified bidder at $5,590,708.50. That's going to get us almost 37,000 square yards of concrete, which will, based on our estimates, will cover that red area. I will note, just, and I apologize for this, in this program sketch, there is a small red block south of the yellow block. That has nothing to do with the apron. That actually is just a random color that was put in. That, that little complex down there is going to depict the OSU flights. the OSU Flight Center and the buildings that they're going to have as part of their little complex down there. So, that red is not tied into this project, and it was discovered late that that might be of some confusion. I will note that because of the CARES Act, the coronavirus, that the federal funding that has come out, this year's federal funding is at 100%. Normally, we would be paying 10% of this 5.5 million, almost 5.6 million. And this year, we'll receive 100% of this federally funded. So, we're very excited about that. At this time, just request the award of this bid for construction of the South Apron to Do-It Construction.
A motion to award bid 15-1920 for the construction of the South Apron at Stillwater Regional Airport to Do-It Construction.
Second.
A motion from Vice Mayor Darlington and a second from Counselor Jaloski. Teresa, could you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Redlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that bid is awarded. We need to get as much as we can under this 100% FAA grant scheme here, Paul. I have a feeling that's why you're, we're going to be talking more about that tonight, right?
Yes.
Item 5G is a bid recommendation for the purchase of a primary airport rescue and firefighting apparatus.
All right. I want to note that items G and H are related. I'm going to go into G first, which is the actual award of this contract. And H talks a little bit more about the supplemental funding for it. So, as previously discussed with the Council and Airport Authority, our primary aircraft rescue and firefighting apparatus, our ARF apparatus, is 20 years old and is in need of replacement. And so, we've worked with the FAA for about the last year. This originally, they were not scheduled to replace this until '22, '23, somewhere around there. And they've agreed to let us use a portion of our passenger entitlements every year. When we hit 10,000 commercial employments, we get a $1 million passenger entitlement allocation from the FAA out of check. This is just, it goes towards our standard AIP Airport Improvement Program projects. And so, typically, in a year like this year, like with a $5.6 million apron project, that million would have gone solely to that, to reduce, obviously, the federal portion. But they agreed, put a half million of that, 1 million, towards an ARF apparatus. So, we went out to bid, we put out a bid, a base bid, which is just the absolute bare minimum, what FAA says you have to have to make it eligible. And then, we put out two alternates. Alternate 1 was vehicle-mounted, manufactable-type add-ons and options that kind of right-sized the truck for us in our environment that we operate in. And then, alternate 2 was all the ancillary equipment and tools that typically go on a fire truck. So, we put this out for bid. May 13th, 2020, we opened up bids, and there was two companies, Rosenbauer and Oshkosh. And I'll mention that both of these, that's the two primary manufacturers of these apparatus. There's not a whole lot more out there to put. So, we were pleased that they both came to the table. Rosenbauer was our low base bid. We were automatically able to eliminate option, or alternate 2, just because it put us way over budget for what we had allocated. And so, we went with alternate 1 and the base bid, which was a total of $773,675. And the FAA or the passenger entitlement out was, again, initially 500,000, and we were going to be in charge of over 55,000. With the CARES Act, we were able to get the full 555,000 from them. However, the bid did come in short, and so, we have identified, I'm sorry, the bid came in long, short to our budget, what we had going. So, and I'll talk about on item H, this, how we're going to fund that additional portion. But we have identified some funds to cover that. And at this point, we would request that this bid be awarded to Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC for the primary ARF apparatus.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors?
I just want to say thank you for being so, I mean, obviously, I know, when you're running an airport, you've got to be thinking out in the future and doing all this planning. I have lots of friends that do airport planning, but it just shows you, as you know, this money is coming down from the federal stimulus package, to be at the ready with these projects and having planned ahead. It allows us to really maximize our benefit from these dollars. And I'm so grateful for the work that you guys are doing to make sure that we can maximize that effect and help our budget probably in other ways. So, thank you for your attentiveness to that, I'm sure, on a daily basis. So...
Thank you. We have great relationship with our FAA program office, as well as a superb engineering company, LBR, that works with us. And so, they keep us, they actually keep us queued up. They're, they're the ones that say, hey, we probably need to start looking at this and getting this designed. And so, we're very fortunate to have them.
Yeah, I mean, just, you really see the benefit of those. I think this will be a time when shovel-ready is really important. We're obviously seeing that with FAA dollars. It's a, it's a good example for the rest of our departments within the city to start looking down the pipe at projects that might also benefit from this kind of stimulus funding. So, again, thank you. And I'll go ahead and make the motion. Motion to award bid number 23-19/20 for the base bid of a primary ARF apparatus, plus alternate 1 for Stillwater Regional Airport to Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Jaloski and a second from Counselor Zanotti to approve this bid. Teresa, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Redlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that bid is awarded to Rosenbauer Minnesota. That takes us to item 5H, approval of budget amendment reflecting advanced payment from OSU on its ground lease. Mr. Pregel?
All right. So, I don't think it's any secret that the city of Stillwater and OSU are lifelong partners, so to speak, of just a lot of ventures, and it's no exception at the airport. And they've been tremendous to us, and their flight school makes up about 90% of our annual operations and an equal amount of our AvGas sales. I talked about our new AvGas system. And their, their new Flight Center is going to just be a tremendous addition to our, our airport and bring in students from all over the country and world, really, to train at our facility. So, they, we're still finalizing through authority, and ultimately, will come for you to approve the lease agreements. They'll have a ground lease agreement that embodies the new Flight Center, which you could kind of see in the earlier program sketch where the South Apron is, those little blocks is kind of showing the area that they're going to be leasing out, as well as the Discovery Lab, which is where the MD-80 lab is, the big plane that's going to be next to their, their new flight school. And so, OSU has always been upfront with us about, when you have needs, we'll help you out any way we can. And so, we obviously had a need here with needing some additional funding for our fire truck. And so, they agreed to go ahead and pay upfront, $235,000 to be used towards that fire truck purchase. In exchange, that will be a credit towards their rent, which, based on the ground lease, and although it's yet to be finalized, it's somewhere around three years of rent that they're upfront paying so that we can go ahead and afford to get this truck now. And so, we're very appreciative of that. And this is just a budget amendment, and we would just ask that you approve the budget amendment accepting the advanced payment from OSU on its ground lease and authorize those funds to be used to fund the primary ARF apparatus and ancillary equipment acquisition. I will add one note. You will notice that the $235,000, it does go a little bit beyond what the, when you add that to the 555,000, it will put us a little bit over what the bid for the base plus alternate 1. We, our plan is to purchase, there's, there's a whole list of tools that fell in that alternate 2 that, as I said earlier, we weren't able to purchase. We are going to be able to purchase some of those, not a full package, but just kind of pick and choose some of those out of that list so that we can go ahead and supply our truck with some tools. So, that's where the extra money will go to.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors, questions on this item?
Paul, you're all kinds of good news today. So, hopefully, we can keep this trend going. I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I hope so.
Motion to approve the attached budget amendment accepting advanced payment from Oklahoma State University on its ground lease and authorize those funds to be used to fund the primary ARF apparatus and ancillary equipment acquisition.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Redlake and a second from Vice Mayor Darlington to approve this item. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Redlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Counselor Jaloski?
How about I unmute first? Yes.
Thank you.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that item is approved. And that takes us down to item 5I, approval of Stillwater Flight Center's renewal application for fuel dispensing permit. Mr. Pregel?
You didn't realize y'all were going to get this much on me tonight, did you?
Yeah.
So, to sell fuel at the airport, you have to, in accordance with ordinance, you have to be authorized by the city council. And so, what we do is an annual fuel permit. Stillwater Flight Center is our sole fuel retailer at this point, and their current permit expires June 30th, 2020. So, they have submitted application with the Airport Administration Office. We've also taken this to review at the Airport Authority. And this is to renew their fuel permit for, starting July 1, 2020, through June 30th, 2021. They are in good standing with us. They've operated on the airport for around 30 years. You know, we sell about a half million gallons of fuel per year, generally, on a good year. This year, maybe not so much with COVID. But, and that, that nets us about 90,000 a year in additional revenue and flowage fees. So, it's a great venture for them and us as well. So, at this point, I would just request approval to renew the application and issuance of a retail fuel permit to Stillwater Flight Center Incorporated.
Counselors?
Motion to approve the renewal application and issuance of a retail fuel dispensing permit to SFCI Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Zanotti and a second from Counselor Jaloski. Teresa, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Redlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that permit is approved. Last up for Mr. Pregel, item 5J, approval of a budget amendment reflecting receipt of $1,112,414 in federal CARES Act airport relief funding. You said all kinds of good news tonight, Paul.
Counselor Redlake, this is for you, in strong here. So...
Bring it home, Paul.
On April 20th, 2020, we brought you an opportunity through the Department of Transportation CARES Act airport relief funding. And you authorized us to apply for grant relief under that, under that CARES Act opportunity. On May 13th, we received the final grant acceptance, signifying the final award of $1,112,414. And that money will go directly to support our operating costs, primarily in FY '21. And so, this is a simple budget amendment. We're asking for approval to reflect the receipt of that money. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors?
How much of this, this may be a question for Melissa more than you, Paul, but does this potentially get money back into the general fund that would have been spent on these airport operations?
So, go ahead, Melissa. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, it does, because it will relieve the transfer that we had budgeted over to the airport to fund its operations. Based on Paul's projections, this should fully fund the airport for next year.
That's a big deal.
It's a huge deal. It really helps us back in the general fund quite a bit.
Good. Excellent. Is there a motion?
It's like a hero motion. Who doesn't want to make that motion?
Go, John.
Go, yeah, John, you should do it. You totally should. I'll second.
Happily. Way to bring it home, Paul. Motion to approve a budget amendment reflecting the receipt of 1.1, well, $1,112,414 in federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security act airport relief funding.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Redlake and a second from Counselor Jaloski. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Redlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that budget item is approved. Thanks, Paul. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next up, item 5K is approval of a budget amendment reflecting additional $1,975 in funding from the Oklahoma Department of Libraries for Stillwater Public Library. Stacy Delano?
Actually, I will be filling in for Stacy tonight. She has to be there for her. So, John McClany Special Projects. The first budget amendment is state aid funding. There was $19,752 of state aid grant from the Oklahoma Department of Libraries in January of 2020. 10% of that grant was withheld until the ODL was certain of full funding. The remaining 10% is now being dispersed. And they're going to use those funds for materials and supplies needed to safely open, and the remainder will go to staff wages. Recommend a motion to approve the library's budget amendment for $1,975 in funding from the Oklahoma Department of Libraries.
Thank you, John. Counselors?
The library is another entity that is very good about working on their grant applications. Motion to approve the budget amendment reflecting $1,975 in funding from the Oklahoma Department of Libraries.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Darlington and a second by Counselor Zanotti. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Redlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that budget amendment is approved. Item 5L, approve a budget amendment reflecting an additional $20,000 in funding from the Oklahoma Humanities and the National Endowment for the Humanities for the Stillwater Public Library. Mr. McClany?
This one is a help grant from Oklahoma Humanities and the National Endowment for the Humanities. It provides emergency funding for libraries and museums with no matching requirements. And they plan to use the funding for staff wages. So, recommend a motion to approve their amendment for $20,000 in funding from the Oklahoma Humanities and the National Endowment for the Humanities.
Motion to approve the budget amendment reflecting $20,000 in funding received from Oklahoma Humanities and the National Endowment for the Humanities.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Counselor Zanotti. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Redlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, that budget amendment is also approved. Thank you, John. And just to echo the Vice Mayor's comments, definitely appreciate the library's work on securing that additional grant funding as well. All right, that takes us down to item 5M, our COVID-19 update. Thankfully, in the city of Stillwater, there's not a whole lot to update in terms of COVID situation. We're still sitting, as far as we can tell, because the state changed their reporting on us this week. But as far as I can tell, there's been no new cases here in our community in the past several weeks. We're happy tonight to be Um, we're happy tonight, uh, to be joined by both Rob Hill from Stillwater Emergency Management and Kelly Rader from the Payne County Health Department. As we discussed at our last meeting, uh, wanting to get some more information from the Health Department on both contact tracing, testing, and, uh, potential, uh, communications plans moving forward, uh, for the university and the city together. So, uh, Rob, do you, um, wanna kick us off? Or should we jump right over to Kelly for, for comments on contact tracing? You're muted, Rob.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, Rob Hill, Emergency Management Director for the City of Stillwater. I do want to say that, um, since we've started phasing, our numbers have been rock solid at 22. And, um, I think we've, as a community, we've done a very, very good job. So Mayor, the, the phasing that you've laid out and the things that you put into place for our community and, and everything have, have been really successful. And I just wanted to let you know that, um, it's been a pleasure to just keep putting 22 in there every day that goes by. So, but, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
I'm, uh, wanna make sure that we're able to hear.
Mayor, I believe, uh, Kelly has dropped off of the phone call. Rob, do you think you could call her and get her back on?
I will. Give me just one moment.
Okay.
Well, you're muted right now.
While we're doing that, um, uh, I will go ahead and, and just discuss for a second a couple of the other COVID-related items. Uh, earlier this afternoon, I signed a new emergency declaration, uh, moving us officially into phase three, along with the state hours recovery plan. Um, some, you know, there, no more businesses to open at this point. Everything's been open since the middle of May. Uh, so this, uh, removed a couple of the other restrictions that were out there, including the gathering limit, um, and moved, uh, per the state's, uh, order from a shelter-in-place requirement for vulnerable population to a shelter-in-place, um, suggestion or, or recommendation, uh, still for our vulnerable population, those 65 and older and with underlying health conditions. So the current order, um, does recommend that folks that, uh, are particularly vulnerable to COVID-19, uh, to continue to shelter in place and stay home when, whenever possible. Uh, but that is no longer a requirement under our order. Um, we also, all of the specific business, um, rules that we have put in place during phases one and two, um, we have moved to a general recommendation to follow the state's, um, guidelines along with, uh, particular professional organizations like the Board of Cosmetology, if those apply to those businesses. Uh, at this point, there are so many, between the CDC, the state, the, the restaurant associations, the, um, cosmetology board, there's, there's a lot of differing, um, recommendations. And, um, really a difficult time to, to try to coalesce those for, for all of us to, to make it a, uh, a particular specific order here. And really, most of those are all recommendations at this point into phase three. And so, um, we've, we've just gone to a, a recommendation that they follow the state and, and, uh, specific guidance of those organizations for businesses. Uh, and then finally, um, what we've discussed previously around reopening of certain city facilities, um, City Hall, uh, the, the community center and the armory opening with limitations in place. Uh, the library will reopen June 8th with certain limitations in place. Uh, at this point, the senior center and Project Heart will continue to, uh, remain closed, although Project Heart's doing delivery and drive-through services of food. Um, again, because of that vulnerable population that they are served, uh, we wanna be extra cautious, uh, with those facilities. Uh, also, the swimming pool at Couch Park will not open this summer, as we've discussed multiple occasions, um, for a variety of reasons, including staffing, um, and, and budget issues. We, we're not gonna be opening the pool this summer. Um, parks will reopen, playgrounds, uh, with signage that, that, uh, folks need to be careful that those facilities won't be disinfected on a regular basis. And so people need to, to, um, follow social distancing protocols, uh, in those facilities as well. And there is a general, um, encouragement to wear face coverings citywide, uh, in, in interacting with people and businesses. Whenever you're around someone, wearing a face covering is still recommended by the CDC. And we appreciate people's care and concern for their neighbors in, in, uh, wearing those face coverings when they're around other folks. So that's, uh, the current, um, emergency declaration. It will stay in effect. It, it runs through June 30th. Um, there is no phase four that's been described by the state at this point. Uh, we're not really sure what that will look like, if that, if the governor's plan is to just remove any and all restrictions at that point and recommendations or what. Uh, I would imagine that we, as a city, will continue, uh, we'll talk here in a minute, I think, about some communications plans, um, in terms of keeping people apprised of the, the risks and making sure they're, they're still following, uh, precautions as much as they can. Um, but we'll, we'll continue to work on that over the next couple of weeks. So, um, Rob and Kelly, hopefully we have you guys on.
I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks for being here, Kelly. We appreciate it.
Great. Um, just to begin, I'm Kelly Rader. I'm the Regional Director for the Health Departments in Payne, K, Noble, Pawnee, Osage, Lincoln, and Creek Counties. Um, I wanted first to discuss the concern that you had regarding the data. Um, the Catastrophic Health Emergency Act, that act expired as far as that declar-, I'm sorry, that declaration expired on May 31st. So that is the reason that you saw the changes today, uh, regarding the data. Whenever that, um, that declaration expired, that changes the way that we are able to, um, provide data as far as the extent of data. So that data has now moved back to county-specific data. I know the governor and his team, uh, are working, um, actively exploring additional legal options and solutions to, um, provide that, that same level of data in the future. So that is something that they're currently working on. That, that's the reason for the change.
Okay.
Um, I know that we, you wanted to discuss testing. Uh, currently, we are testing and have testing available at every county health department, uh, as well as in our area, every health department site. Uh, we have testing available daily. Uh, we have not, uh, had an issue with, uh, providing testing and having enough testing for individuals that desire that. We also have the ability to expand testing should we start seeing an expansion in cases, uh, in the future. So, um, testing is available at our Stillwater site, uh, Curbside, as well as at our Cushing site. Um, we are also working with our local, uh, health partners, um, for available testing in their offices, uh, as well. In reference to tracing, uh, we have 10, uh, National Guard, uh, unit members that are assisting us with, uh, contact, uh, case contact tracing in our area. There are nearly 600, um, contact tracers that have been trained statewide. Um, that is very much needed in case we start seeing an increase, uh, in case numbers statewide. We can expand to utilizing those individuals for, uh, contact, uh, tracing to assist in making certain that individuals that have been noted, um, in an investigation as a contact to someone with disease, that we can follow up with them daily to be certain that they are remaining, uh, in quarantine or isolation, if they become symptomatic, so that we can get testing for them, as well as to follow up as far as their health is concerned. Um, with the tracing piece, uh, we will have an opportunity, uh, throughout the state to have a call bank, uh, in the future, uh, as well as a mobile application. Um, we anticipate that the mobile application will be available, uh, within the next few weeks. It's currently being, uh, piloted. So that will also, uh, be an option, but it is not available yet, but it's coming. As far as, um, our relationship with the Oklahoma State University, uh, we are planning with them. We are in communication with them, uh, weekly. Uh, I'm part of a public health, uh, task force. We are looking at what target, um, testing will look like, uh, when students come back. We are looking at testing capacity. We're looking at planning. Uh, we're working with OSU, uh, for planning, uh, for their students and for their staff, uh, for the upcoming semester. I also would like, um, to discuss vaccine, when there is a vaccine available, hopefully sooner rather than later. Uh, Rob and I have worked, uh, together for many years on, um, mass vaccination, uh, as well as medication, um, immediate proclaxus, um, for many years. And so we have plans, uh, in place for each of our counties to do mass vaccination. So when we do have a vaccine available, we have plans in place that have been exercised so that we can get vaccine, uh, in, to our population as quickly as possible. What questions do you have for me?
Thank you, Kelly. That's good information. I appreciate, um, you sharing that. It's certainly the, the vaccine plan is something I hadn't really thought about much. But, uh, for sure, if, uh, when we get one, we're, we're gonna wanna get it out quickly. So I'm glad that, that we're ready for that. Uh, counselors, questions for, for Kelly?
Kelly, I just had one question about the, um, app that you mentioned for the contact tracing. Um, is that app something that's being developed by our state? Or is, what, who is behind that?
Um, it is an application that is, uh, being developed at the state level, uh, with a contract.
Okay. And then when that is finally rolled out after piloting, is that something that people would be able to download, like, through the App Store on their phones? Or what's the rollout gonna look like?
They, they would enroll. They would enroll with that application. So during the time of an investigation, uh, when we are contacting an individual, uh, that is a contact to a case, uh, of disease, we would give that to them as an option, uh, when it is available to roll out, um, to enroll in for their contact tracing.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly.
It's an option, uh, for a lot of, uh, of individuals that I believe will, it will be desirable.
Sure. And certainly will not be a requirement, just to be clear.
No, no. Um, the, but if they choose not to do an application, then we will be phoning them.
Okay.
Kelly, I think this is, uh, Pat Darlington, and I really appreciate you, uh, um, going through all that information and, and taking the time to be with us today. I'm particularly interested in the tracing. And, um, you know, all the news press has been that we don't have enough tracers for our population in Oklahoma. And 10 tracers, how many, how many counties did you, are you in charge of?
Seven. And that's, that's currently what we have, uh, on the ground. However, there are nearly 600 people across the state that have been trained to do contact tracing. So that, we have 10 people on the ground. They are able to do the contact tracing at this particular moment in time without, uh, issue. However, if we see a significant spike in cases, we will need assistance to do that. And hence why we are training staff all over the state to be able to assist with that.
Okay. I, I actually, I've had some people contact me about, um, volunteering to be tracers. Are you taking people just from the public?
Um, we, we can. Uh, they would be vetted and they could receive training. Uh, actually, we would send them through our human resources, uh, area. If you do have individuals that would like, uh, to volunteer, uh, they can contact, um, the health departments, uh, their local county health department and speak with, uh, their coordinating nurse. And we can see what we can do to get them some training, uh, and, and sign them up.
Okay. And this, and are all the tracers volunteers?
No. Um, we have, uh, public and private partnerships. We have individuals, uh, that are working for the National Guard. We have individuals that are with OU, OSU, and then we have, um, folks that are actually on contract and being paid.
Okay.
That will be paid.
After, okay. Um, after the, a person is, um, notified that they have been in, in the vicinity of a person who is infected with the virus and they are asked to quarantine themselves, um, that's a voluntary thing, quarantining yourself, correct?
No, we ask individuals to, uh, quarantine. Uh, if they are on, if they are unable to quarantine, we, uh, work with them as to why they're unable to quarantine. We provide documentation for them for employment. Uh, if they need assistance, um, socially, we have, uh, information for them. But quarantine is they, if they have been a, and a known true contact to a case of disease, we are asking them to quarantine for 14 days, uh, from their last exposure to that case.
But you're asking them, but not?
We, we are asking them. And if they, um, if they absolutely refuse, um, to, to be, to go through with quarantine, we actually can provide an order for them, uh, to do so. So it is, it is really a requirement.
Okay.
If they have to leave their home, they're given very specific instructions on how to do that. So quarantine and isolation are in order.
Okay. Are they, um, is there a, a place that people can be housed if they have to be quarantined?
We work with individuals. If they, um, are in a situation where they cannot isolate, uh, safely in their home, um, we, like, away from their family members, uh, we work with them to find, uh, a place where they can, um, be isolated safely.
Great. Um, one other question on, uh, the, you said if there's a significant increase in cases, um, how, how do you define a significant increase?
That was going to be defined by a percentage, and it's also going to be defined by, um, if our health system and public health system is taxed. So, uh, if our hospitals, uh, cannot handle, uh, cases, uh, that are being, that are being seen within their facilities, um, that, that is a concern and that's a significant, a significant rise in cases and a consi-, a significant concern, uh, for our ability to handle, uh, the illness within our communities.
So, a percentage of new cases?
Well, we're looking at a percentage of new cases as well as the ability for our communities to care for the individuals that are ill.
So, yeah, a percentage of new cases in Oklahoma City is gonna be different than a percentage of new cases in Stillwater versus, uh,
Or, yes, or a surrounding county or a region.
Yeah.
So that's something that we would look, um, at, at a, at, in a county, by county, community, by community, uh, situation. And we would work with our local communities to act, um, accordingly as far as what recommendations should be, uh, for that specific community.
Okay.
If we don't, uh, if the, if the Oklahoma, um, officials are not able to publish information, um, smaller than counties, does, Rob, do you have access to numbers so that you're watching Stillwater?
Vice Mayor, what we do in that instance is I contact the hospital on a daily basis and check to see if they have any new cases. If they have cases, I can usually derive if they're from the Stillwater area or if they're from the region and get an idea if they are a local increase in number or if it's a regional increase.
And we work with our local communities as far as if there is a concern specifically about a community. I may not be able to tell you down to the very street level what the situation is, but I will be able to work with Rob, with our local hospital, with, um, the city council to make recommendations, um, to discuss the concerns that we have for the public health, uh, in the Stillwater community.
Kelly, as, as I've communicated to you, I'm, I'm so happy that, um, Stillwater and Payne County has been as healthy as it has been. But we were, it was such a unique, uh, timeframe that all this happened. You know, when half of our population left the city and did not come back en masse. Uh, and now we're expecting, um, not only the students to be here, but, uh, full schedule of, And now we're expecting not only the students to be here, but full schedule of football and sports events. Our, our landscape is going to change quite dramatically.
And, yeah. And we are working with OSU very closely to plan not only for their day-to-day type of operations and what, how they need to prepare just for students that live on campus, but also an influx of other individuals that are coming onto the campus throughout the semester. I also know that the Oklahoma State Department of Health is meeting with the, the Board of Higher Education in their regions, talking about some of the, some of those same things statewide and what recommendations need to be made. We're talking with our state epidemiologists regarding what surveillance should look like on campuses. It's very unique. It's a very unique population. And we want to do the best that we can as far as surveillance for that population and how that population fits into Stillwater as far as the greater community.
Thank you.
I can't imagine the, the level of thinking on your feet that you all have had to do these past few months. I do think, and I think Vice Mayor Darlington was kind of getting at some of the things that I wanted to talk about a little bit in with, in terms of contact tracing and things like that. I feel like that's such a, we've gotten, gotten comfortable with terminology throughout the progression of this pandemic. I think we all know what social distancing is, you know? Understand face coverings and things like that. It, it seems to me that contact tracing is maybe the next term that we all need to kind of get comfortable with and understand a little bit better, particularly if that's kind of our, our next line of defense as Vice Mayor Darlington was, you know, as our community does change and comes back more in full force. Are there, are there things that you could just, like, just kind of summarize what that process looks like so that people could start to get familiar and not be so afraid? I know it would be kind of a jarring circumstance to maybe get that call, to be asked to download an app, to be asked to stay, just what that process might look like for people? And are there materials that we can share with the public to just kind of sit by and show them what that process looks like so that it's not such a scary unknown and that we can all kind of start to get comfortable with it?
Yes. And this may be a time that Melissa wants to jump in. We're actually working with Melissa as well as with OSU regarding communication. And we do have some information that actually was just put out today regarding contact tracing with some infographics regarding what contact tracing looks like. So we can share those things. You're correct, it would be dark. You are an individual that, you know, you will get a phone call stating, you know, hello, I am so-and-so with the Health Department. I'm calling you regarding a, a situation where you were in contact and have been named as a contact to somebody that has COVID-19. And so there's a significant amount of education that occurs with that phone call as far as, you know, asking, you know, tell me what your health is like right now? Do you have any symptoms of disease? And then the explanation of what the next days will look like, depending upon the last contact that they had with the individual that has illness. You're right, it's drawing and it change, it changes your existence for several days as well as just how you're going to function, how your family's going to function. But we also have individuals that are trained. If they can't answer questions, they have individuals that are nearby that can help as well as individuals that have some resource knowledge for folks that, you know, have concerns about whether they can truly handle that type of quarantine without assistance. And if they cannot, we, we try to assist them as much as possible in finding assistance.
Such an incredible process. But I think that education piece, getting it out so that people have some sort of understanding of what this might look like, I think would really help. And I, I think, you know, it could feel to some like an invasion of privacy. I think that those might be some concerns we hear from our community. You know, where were you? Who have you been hanging around or where? I just, I think there's a lot of education so that people get comfortable and so that people understand, you know, we don't want to go back to a closed-down situation. And if we don't want to do that, then face coverings and contact tracing are kind of the tools that we have in this next phase. And they will be incredibly important as we, you know, invite students back into our community.
Well, and continuing to social distance. Social distancing is a huge part of that, protecting yourself as well as protecting individuals that you're in contact with. It's very important. And contact tracing is super important as far as making sure individuals that have, that know, have a known exposure to disease, that they quarantine or isolate themselves to decrease the possibility of spreading illness unknowingly.
Yeah. And Kelly, given the fact that you and your staff are probably going to be very busy or continue to be very busy in the coming weeks, you know, face-to-face communication and education on contact tracing may be difficult for people that are in, that are seeking that knowledge. My father actually sent me some information on a Johns Hopkins course delivered through Coursera. I wrote down the website. I don't know if you can read Dr. Dan Roddigan. It's backwards. I didn't take into account that that'd be a mirror image. But it's, it's coronavirus.jhu.edu/contact-tracing. I mean, you can actually take a six-hour course on this and become a contact tracer and, you know, learn how it works, what the idea behind it is. For anybody out there that's interested or, or, you know, may, may want some further in-depth information beyond what, what can be provided on the surface, so.
And I've heard several municipalities stating that they're asking some, especially some of their communications staff to review that training, just to provide their staff and their community with that expanded level of knowledge as well. And that's, that's exciting, that individuals are seeking that out. But we definitely want anyone who has questions. We want to be proactive in the information to help people understand why contact tracing is necessary and why it is so, so important.
And I'll, I'll go on to add that, that, that course online is, is 100% free as well. No cost associated with it as well.
So Dr. Wedlake, John McClainy actually finished that course on Sunday. And you take a little test at the end of it. So we do have on staff here one person who has been through the Johns Hopkins class on contact tracing. And I believe Assistant City Manager Dennison is working on that class as well as Kristi Leuper, Director of HR. So we're trying to prepare, not so much that we think we will be out there doing the contact tracing, but so we can have an awareness and an appreciation to help Kelly and her staff as they are actively out there working the situation.
That is greatly appreciated.
Is there anybody in our marketing, public relations area that's interested in taking it?
Um, we haven't discussed that with them, but I think it's simple enough to get set up. And Paula just texted me that she's done with the class as well. So I, I don't doubt that there will be others that will want to jump on that platform and take the class.
Well, and speaking of marketing, Vice Mayor, that brings up a good point. I mean, is this something that once we've vetted it through a few of our staff that we could post on, on the city's website for anybody that wanted to take it?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's part, that's part of the communication plan that's going on now is that we're trying to keep our stakeholders as updated as we possibly can with the most current information that we can. And then Sherri Fletcher has reached out to Monica Roberts at OSU. And I believe she's reached out, Kelly, to Jennifer Nunn in your office with the Health Department. So they kind of form that nucleus of that citizen communication group. And then they will start as they meet and, and formalize their plans. They'll start pulling the students in as well because it's going to be critical that we let those students know what our expectations are here in Stillwater for COVID-19 and how we expect them to guard themselves against a resurgence.
Be responsible citizens for all of us.
Yes, yes, exactly.
I think that's part of the communication that I've just had with people out in the community. I know kind of maybe in the middle of all of this, we talked about, you know, the longer game that we need to play here in our community in terms of getting to fall, making sure that we have a safe and healthy of a summer as possible so that the student population can come back to Stillwater since we're so, so many of our businesses, so much of our social network, so much of our community is, is interwoven with the student population. And as I've talked with businesses about, you know, all the different phasing and all the different, you know, restrictions that they might be enduring at this point, I've encouraged them to, to think conservatively through the summer so that we can get to a safe fall. You know, if that means extending our face coverings, if that means extending our social distancing, kind of not letting our guard down. There's, there's so much in Stillwater that is, that rides on our students returning in the fall.
And they actually have returned. We opened City Hall today and, and I was watching last week as well. And there are people, I was just, I was shocked at how many people were in line today to initiate service. And when you think about these, these kiddos probably signed their leases right before COVID hit and we kind of shut the city down. And so whether they're going to be doing an in-person class or a virtual class, they have an apartment here. So I think they're here, you know? Not all of them, but a goodly portion of them. And just kudos to our staff today. They handled that influx of people beautifully, very, very ordered. And we just, it was just constant. But we maintained social distance. We offered masks as people entered the building. And, and I just want to applaud our staff. They handled it beautifully today.
We also have a number of events at the Expo Center that'll be taking place June and July. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're just going to be different, look different. And I really appreciate the staff in our restaurants and stores and city staff and any business that has to kind of protect themselves as well as provide services for all these people. So take a walk in the park one afternoon.
Yeah. So really appreciate again, Kelly, you being here and providing that, that information for us and the continued work that you and your team are doing covering seven counties during a time like this. I'm sure has been a bigger challenge than, than any of us could really understand. But we, we really do appreciate your service to Payne County and to the city of Stillwater in particular and to our communities in terms of keeping everyone safe. And we'll, we'll certainly continue to, to work with you and, and your team to, to maintain a safe community here in Stillwater.
And we are very, very lucky to have the citizens of Stillwater in Payne County. They have been wonderful. Overall, we have had wonderful support in every community, especially in Stillwater. I can't say especially in Stillwater, maybe I say also in Stillwater. We have had excellent partnerships. We look forward to continuing that. If there are things that you need from your local county health department, please do not hesitate to call us. We say the same things to our citizens in Stillwater and throughout Payne County. Please contact us if, if there is a need, if there is a concern and we want to help. And we are here to serve our citizens and the public.
Thank you very much. You're doing a great job with it.
Thank you.
We can move on to item three here in our COVID update to discuss our video conference meeting or return to our regular adopted meeting schedule with sort of the restrictions being lifted the way they have and the current status of cases. We've kind of been talking, I've been talking with staff about the idea of being back in the meeting room and at least the option of, of folks, I guess, continuing to be remote if they need to be. John, we, we, the rules around how this remote meeting thing works is a, is a little fuzzy. But certainly if we were to come back in person, I think we'd want to adopt that same sort of spread out seating structure we had kind of right before we, we went online and continued to, to ensure social distancing in the seating, the, the in-person seating. But I, I do think there's some importance to, to being in person. I think while we have had a few people comment, I think this format is potentially not, you know, people are not as comfortable figuring out how to comment in these settings. And I'm a little concerned about that. And, you know, our, our community is going to, returning, is returning to normal or some semblance of normal. And, and that includes our, our regular meetings in the meeting chamber. So I would, you know, be interested to hear your thoughts, counsel, on what returning to meeting in person would look like, what you'd like to see in place and when you think you'd be comfortable doing that.
I'm, I really like the Zoom meetings. And I am, you know, just in my own personal life, I live in a community of older people, older than me, who have many health conditions that are, would make them particularly vulnerable. So I, I have a, I feel like I have a responsibility to my entire community to keep myself healthy. And then on the other end of the spectrum, my, my 12th grandchild is being born in July. And I really, really want to be healthy to see that, that, that baby. So I'm, I'm, I understand very well the importance of in-person. And I will do it if, if that's what I have to do. I'd rather not.
On, on those lines, John, what is our, Mr. Dorman? We have until what, November, I think, under the current act?
Yes.
Or does it go through next year? Okay.
November 15th is the sunset date, I believe.
And, and we can do this in any kind of fashion we, we'd want, right? We could have it open with two or three counselors in person and have others on, online?
Legally, it's, it's possible. I mean, there's no restriction in the current statute that would make it, make it impossible for you to blend the meetings, so to speak. From a practical perspective, it, it's a little bit harder to do because it requires that we use some different formats. And to do that too, we would have to have significantly more staff in the, in the camera room where all of this stuff is, is produced right now. And in, in that instance, you're not able to maintain social distancing or at least those persons would not be able to. And we do have a person there who may be somewhat susceptible over and above, you know, normal situation. So it's, it, you know, it, we'll do whatever you want to do. But we're, we're, we have had some conversations about trying to find a way to blend this. And as you may recall, when we first did this, when we had everybody in the room with the earphones in and we had all the feedback and stuff in the room, I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're, we're looking at if we continue on a Zoom format. We would have to move to something else probably.
Okay.
I, I do understand that. And I, and I, as I said, I will come to City Hall for meetings. It, it would not be my first choice, but I will do it.
Other counselors with comments or thoughts?
Mayor, as we kind of go through this last phase of phase three, you know, would it be good to finish the rest of the meetings out here in June and look at starting in July? I don't know. That's still, I mean, our next meeting would be what, June 15th? Is that right?
15, yeah.
It's June 15th.
If we, I mean, I want to be mindful of Vice Mayor Darlington's situation and... If we, I mean, I want to be mindful of Vice Mayor Darlington's situation and don't know if another four weeks make a difference, Vice Mayor, to you or is it matter of, you know, as long as, I mean, there's not, not much is going to change between now and four weeks, but I don't know if that would.
Luckily, probably this next four weeks is the safest time.
Right.
To start going out. And, and you know, it's not that I have not been out, so that's okay. And I will be gone two meetings in July, hopefully for this new baby. So you won't, I won't have to, you won't have to worry about me then. And I, I mean, I'm taking that risk to go do that. So I, I, I don't want to be, you know, you know, pretending that I'm not going out my own self and that meeting just seems like, I mean, we're pretty close up on the horseshoe, although we're not talking right to each other.
Well, is, in thinking of going back to the idea of blending meetings, is there a legal requirement that we have video of the counselors or is this something that we could do? Like, for example, if Vice Mayor Darlington wanted to call in by conference call on telephone to discuss with audio, do you have to have the video portion of that?
No, you could use audio. That might be the way to resolve this, quite frankly.
Because that, I mean, that doesn't take any extra production quality, you know, for a production crew.
No, I think the only difference, if, if we had members participate by audio is that because you can't see them, we'd be taking roll about every 15 minutes, which is what the Attorney General's recommended. But, you know, that's a small price to pay to make sure that everybody's safe. And so if, if that's, that needs to be, then that's, that doesn't seem to be a problem.
So we have, Vice Mayor, you, you mentioned that you'll miss the meetings, I think, the 20th and the 27th of July?
Right.
I can't remember.
Actually, the 27th is a study session. I don't know if that's scheduled yet, but I'll meet this August.
Oh, the first meeting in August?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, wait, would you miss the 20th? July 20th?
July 20th.
The study session?
And the first meeting.
And the first meeting in August, okay.
Yeah. So there, you get to go do whatever. I could call you from Washington. I mean, if, if we were doing Zoom, I could be in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you could. I mean, I, I think it makes sense to, to say something along the lines of, of that first meeting in July, planning on the majority of the council being in person. If, if you, Vice Mayor, want to call in, that would give us plenty of time to figure out how we could do a call in for that meeting. You know, if you, and if, you know, trying to preserve your health before you make that trip, you know, you may want to just call in for that meeting, but it would give us time to figure out whether we could do that or not. And then we'd still have time if, if we can't, you know, to go ahead and just do that meeting on Zoom if we, if we, you know, don't have another alternative.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I think it's, you know, I mean, the, yeah, this, this whole thing is a, there's a lot of personal differences and we all have, you know, different concerns and, and situations. And so we, we got to try to balance that as much as we can. But I, I think what we'd want to do is just tell staff that we, we'd shoot for an in-person meeting on July 6th, assuming we can provide a, a good way for you, Vice Mayor, to, to either call in or, or be absent in some way. And then, then we'd have a few meetings to kind of get it, you know, in order and see what, how it goes. And if we can do that call-in option, then, you know, we could extend that out for the next couple of months to the extent we'd need to.
Okay. Well, well, I think that potentially could need to be a requirement that my family has to look at too, having a medically fragile child at home. We're talking a lot with our doctors and pediatricians and surgeons and things like that to understand how we best kind of gauge our risk and how we get back out there. So, I mean, certainly, like Vice Mayor, I'm not completely sheltered at home, but we're definitely not out and about very often. And would, I would really want to understand from our doctors before I made a decision to come back in person. But that being said, I do think like the last meeting that we had in person where staff went, came off of the horseshoe and was down in the larger meeting space that gave us more space on the horseshoe. And I, I, I mean, I, I feel like that probably gave us adequate distancing potentially there. So.
That's true.
And we, you know, I would expect we would, I, I think we could, you know, I've seen meetings that are being conducted with, with face coverings. You know, it certainly wouldn't, I don't know what our requirements can be in terms of the audience and that sort of thing, given that it's a public meeting and all the rules there, but we would certainly, you know, encourage and potentially use those. I mean, I think we could wear face coverings while we're conducting the meeting to the extent we felt it necessary. So yeah, that spacing and those other precautions, I think we, we would certainly roll those in. But we can take a look at that from a, the staff can take a look at that here over the next couple of weeks, you know, sort of working towards a July 6th in-person meeting, sort of work out some of those kinks and, and let us know what, what a plan might look like between now and then. And, you know, we can decide, we don't have to set it in stone right now, but we, you know, I think staff should start looking at what that looks like and how we could do it as soon as the July meeting. If that works.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else COVID related that counselors need to discuss?
I wonder if the explanation for the cancellation of the 4th of July is COVID-related or budget-related?
I'll let Melissa take that one.
It, it's twofold, Vice Mayor. Certainly, we are being very cautious about our spending and a large portion of the fireworks is through donations from our local partners. And the, the window for that opportunity, we would have started fundraising back about the time COVID started. And so that window was closing rapidly. We needed to make a decision whether we handled the 4th of July or whether we postponed till September. And the decision was made, City Council there, or within the city manager's office, that we postponed until September so that we could ascertain what our financial situation is and feel better about going out to those community partners and asking them to underwrite the 4th of July or the fireworks. So that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you.
The hope or potential plan on, on the fireworks would, would look, we'd be looking at Labor Day as a potential alternate date? Okay, what else? Let's move on to item six. Six A, Resolution CC dash 20 dash 11, a resolution authorizing a longer-term payment plan for utility services approving reading statement of cutoff notifications and resuming disconnections beginning June 2nd, reinstating a 10% penalty on delinquent accounts effective July 6th. Mr. Dorman?
The title's almost explanatory, but basically this is the item that you took up at the last council meeting and SUA meeting. And what this does basically is it repeals your previous resolutions that suspended disconnections and the collection of the 10% penal, late penalty back in February, excuse me, in March. So those are suspended, effective tomorrow. It also provides for the city manager to create a, a payment program to provide for some extended payment options. And it caps, it creates a deadline of July 17th to get into that program. So basically, that's it in a nutshell.
So to be clear, while it says cutoff notices and disconnections of delinquent accounts shall resume on June 2nd, we will not be disconnecting people on June 2nd who have, who are, you know, were potentially delinquent during the time that we were suspending these. People have this six-week period between June 2nd and July 17th to get enrolled in a payment plan so that they can take care of that existing delinquency before a cutoff would be, would be done, correct?
Right.
Oh, go ahead. Well, if you approve this resolution this evening, we will go ahead tomorrow and send out cutoff notices to individuals that meet their criteria. They have a two-week period before we actually go off and terminate service to come in and work with us and get into a payment plan to get those bills taken care of. And so every week then, we send out cutoff notices. They get a two-week window to come in and work with us before we disconnect the service.
Okay.
And so it just keeps rolling, but we felt like we needed a firm cutoff date that we would not, if you have not been in before the 17th of July, then you're just, we're going to go back to business as usual with you and, and we will cut off and, and attach the penalties and that kind of thing as appropriate.
So the, the, but the availability of the longer payoff terms will be available until that point?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So if you do receive a cutoff notice, we talked about it having some kind of language in it that says we have, we have extended payment terms available, please contact us, correct?
And we've modified, yes, we've modified that disconnect notice and it's got the, the elongated payment plan in the notice as well.
Okay. And I heard, I heard us on the radio talking, telling people, you know, in ads. So I know we've got media and social media out there trying to, to let people know that they need to, to contact us and we're, we're going to work with them. They just need to get, get in contact with us first. But I assume we'll continue to, to push that pretty hard to make sure people understand what's going on.
We will, we will. And as, if you'll remember when Dana made her presentation two weeks ago, a lot of folks don't take action until they get that disconnection notice. And then they've got two weeks to act to get that taken care of. So we should start seeing them come in. That's, that's their trigger.
Okay. Other questions, counselors? Is there a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC dash 20 dash 11.
We have a motion from Counselor Wedlake and a second from Counselor Jaloski, maybe? Teresa, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Resolution CC dash 20 dash 11 is approved. Okay, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Ms. Reams?
Nothing to report, sir.
Counselors?
I just wanted to point out really quickly, Mayor, I noticed on social media today, the governor was talking about the need for donations to food pantries across the state. I think he and First Lady are doing some work there, but I think obviously, you know, we have a wonderful food pantry here locally at our Daily Bread and I'm, I'm certain that they're part of that need. If there are folks in the community that can contribute to them, it sounds like we still definitely have people in our community that have that need.
Absolutely. I noticed also that Stillwater Community Foundation, in conjunction with the Hospital Foundation and several other places are accepting donations for, for local support. So if you're looking for a place to donate as well, contact Stillwater Community Foundation. I wanted to comment just briefly on larger national events in relation to the, the murder of George Floyd and the demonstrations taking place across the country. Our police chief Watts posted a statement earlier tonight about our police department's response and, and that the police department work with our community here in Stillwater, which I think historically has been very good. And their support, the, the police department's support for those who are upset and protests that have been planned. In fact, there was one, I think, tonight, peaceful walk, march by local activists, which was handled very well. And I think another plan for Wednesday and our police department is meeting with those folks, to talk to them and to handle those, those demonstrations and, and see that they're conducted positively, which I fully expect they will be. I think personally, this is a really important topic for all of us to pay attention to and to recognize the existence of systemic racism in our communities, even, even Stillwater, a place that a lot of us feel is idyllic in a lot of ways, for not, not for everybody, right? There are certainly members of our community that, that do experience racism and, and the effects of racism on a daily basis. And, and I think all of us have to be willing to recognize that and to be willing to listen and to work with folks to ensure in our positions on the city council that we're doing everything we can to provide a community that treats everyone here fairly and to work with our police department to ensure that they treat everyone they come in contact with fairly. And I know we, we work a lot on training and hiring. We talk a lot about this in, in those, our discussions on council. I'm very proud of the work that our police department does, but there's always room for improvement and those conversations will continue here in Stillwater. I reached out today to the Stillwater Community United group that puts on our annual MLK Day celebration and some other folks to, to start having some of those discussions to make sure that we're, we're, we're working towards, you know, more and more ability to, to work together and to solve the problems that, that, that we might see here. So I just wanted to make that comment and to say that we're, we're listening and always willing to listen and willing to, to recognize that our community is not immune from, from these problems. These are not big city problems. They're not just problems in other places. They're problems that we deal with here too and that we're, we're willing to continue to work to, to improve and, and to address those, those issues. Okay. I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Darlington and a second by Counselor Wedlake to adjourn the city council meeting. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council meeting for June 1st, 2020 is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for June 1st, 2020. First up, we have a consent docket with a special meeting minutes from May 18th. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion from trustee Zanotti. I couldn't remember which word it was. I know it wasn't counselor. We have a motion from trustee Zanotti and a second from Vice Chair Darlington to approve the consent docket. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. We will jump down to item five, general orders, which looks like it's going to be the Lauren Smith Show tonight. Item A is approve a GRDA wholesale power purchase agreement. Mr. Smith?
Evening trustees, Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. This is an expenditure request for our wholesale purchase power for FY '21. We're estimating that we're going to need about $24 million to pay GRDA this fiscal year. And staff proposes that trustees authorize the expenditure limit for GRDA not to exceed 24 million.
Trustees?
Now, Lauren, Paul Prigo...
Now Lauren, Paul Prigo came in with all this money that we're gonna be putting back into funds. What gives you?
Yeah, but we're, look at it this way, we're spending 24 million to make about 45 million, so that should make you happy.
Okay.
Yeah.
In that case, I will, if there are no further questions, I will make a motion to approve fiscal year 21 GRDA wholesale power purchase agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from trustee Wedlake and a second from trustee Zanotti. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that purchase agreement is approved. Item 5B, approve a fiscal year 21 agreement with Enable Oklahoma Interstate Transmission for Gas Commodity Purchase and Transmission. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. And so this is for the Stillwater Energy Center, this is the gas commodity that we expect to purchase or spend to produce electricity at the Stillwater Energy Center. This is a long-term contract, just like the GRDA contract, and staff proposes that trustees authorize the expenditure limit for Enable not to exceed 1.4 million dollars. It's important to note also, this is actually paid back to us via the energy payment that we received from GRDA. We just pay that, we have the contracts, we own the contracts, so we pay out and it's, it comes back to us through the energy payment that GRDA pays for what we produce.
Trustees?
Motion to authorize the expenditure limit for Enable not to exceed 1.4 million dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from trustee Jaloski and a second from Vice Chair Darlington. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that purchase agreement is approved. Item 5C, fiscal year 21 agreement with ONG for natural gas transmission. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. So this kind of ties in with the Enable piece, but this is the, this is the delivery cost for the transportation costs for the four-mile lateral from, ties in the Enable pipeline, the ONG pipe that comes down to the SEC. We estimate those costs are gonna be around $200,000 in FY21. Again, these are recouped and the energy cost comes back.
So we pay for the gas and we pay for the pipe that the gas comes in?
Well, we pay for the transportation of the fuel to the, to the station, yeah.
And it all comes?
There's the commodity, the commodity that's actually the gas and then there's the transportation piece to get it here.
Yeah, okay. Trustees?
Motion to authorize the expenditure limit for ONG not to exceed $200,000.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zanotti and a second by trustee Wedlake. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that natural gas transmission agreement is approved. Item 5D, approve fiscal year 21 agreement with Futura for electric system software support.
Okay, this is really the software that runs the electric utility. We have a geographic information system that maps every component out in the field, use Futura stake and project tracking for our layout design for when we construct. One of the biggest features is our outage management system that is provided by them and that's a huge system, tracks all of our outages and helps us keep our customers online and FieldPro software that we use to enable our field devices to see maps, our iPads to see maps for our personnel in the field and several other applications that go along those lines. This is an expenditure request for that and staff asked that we approve this amount.
Trustees?
Motion to approve the, accept the staff recommendation.
Motion from trustee, Vice Chair Darlington and a second from trustee Zanotti to approve the annual software support agreement. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that software support agreement in the amount of $66,574.20 is approved. That takes us to 5E, authorize sole source purchase from Wortzilla for services up to $100,000 and parts up to $200,000 in fiscal year 21. Mr. Smith?
Okay, so this, at the Stillwater Energy Center, we have three Wortzilla engine generators. I know that you guys have all seen them.
Really cool.
They use proprietary, Wortzilla equipment is proprietary, there's many of the components on there, you can only buy from Wortzilla, so that's why this is a sole source expenditure authorization. And one of the key things and why we do this like this, you know, there's, there's so many moving parts out there, very expensive parts, that we need to get fixed very quickly should something happen. Under our agreement with Grand River Dam Authority, they pay us on capacity and if we're not able to operate, we don't get paid. And so that, if the entire plant were down for one day, it would cost us $12,000. So, you know, we don't have time to really mess around when we need equipment and services in here. So what we do every year is set this up so that if we have an emergency, we can make, we can move very quickly so that we can ensure our reliability and to receive our full capacity payment to pay the debt. So that's, that's what we're doing here. Staff is requesting sole source approval to purchase services up to $100,000 and parts up to $200,000. This sole source purchase will allow staff to purchase services and parts from Wortzilla without delays.
Thank you, Lauren. Trustees?
Motion to authorize sole source purchase from Martzilla for services up to 100,000 and parts up to 200,000 in FY21 for the Stillwater Energy Center and approve the budget amendment appropriating the expenditures from the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Darlington and a second from trustee Zanotti. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that purchase agreement is approved. That moves us down to section six on resolutions and our last appearance for Lauren Smith tonight, but we have Resolution SUA 2020-3, a resolution adopting an electric rate for, electric rate for electric vehicle charging station service. Mr. Smith and Mr. Niles?
Yes, excellent, excellent. Back on September 16th of 2019, the general service rate was updated to allow for the resale of electricity by public EV charging stations. At the time, we kind, this was kind of a placeholder for us until we could complete our cost of service study, where as part of that scope, we were going to create an individual electric, a public electric vehicle charging station. So we, David Niles with Avant Energy has completed that task and he is here to provide us with the presentation and answer any questions that you may have. So with that, I will turn it over to David Niles.
Thank you. Again, my name's David Niles, I'm sharing my screen, hopefully is that, can you see it? Okay, let me just get the presentation going here. So again, my name's David Niles, I'm a vice president with Avant Energy. I was before you, right at three months ago, and a lot has changed since then. Avant Energy does a lot of work with municipalities, Native American tribes, colleges and universities on a wide variety of energy topics. So as Mr. Smith just said, the overview of the work, this was the last piece of the rate study that I was presenting on three months ago, and that was the development of a new SUA rate for electric vehicle charging stations. And this is what I promise will be a brief presentation on those efforts. So just to provide some background, there are four electric vehicle charging stations currently in the SUA service territory. However, all four of them have very little electric load on their meters, so they aren't being used very much right now, is the takeaway there. And as Mr. Smith indicated, that they're currently on the general service rate, but these people were informed that a new EV charge, electric vehicle charging rate was being developed and that they would be transitioned to that once it was approved. And another piece of background information that I think is important in understanding the rate recommendations that will follow is that the Utilities Authority spent $83,000 in materials costs to supply service to these four charging stations. So just to go over some of the analysis before we get to the recommendations, public EV charging is quite different than home electric vehicle charging. Public charging is more likely to be at the time of Stillwater's system peak, just because it's when people are out and about generally during the day, visiting parks, restaurants, which is where some of the charges are located in the vicinity of those types of facilities. As I mentioned earlier, public electric vehicle charging is also usually low load factor, meaning load factor is a representation of the amount of energy used by a given meter in a period of time, say a month or a year, divided by the maximum amount used at any point during that period of time, times the number of hours in that period. So the highest possible load factor is 100%, so if you had a meter that had a load on it that say had 100 kilowatt-hours every single hour of the month, it would have a load factor of 100%. Whereas if you had a type of load where you had a big draw on power for a short period of time, say for an hour, you were at 100 kilowatts and every other hour of the month, you were at, say, 1 kilowatt-hour, you would have a load factor of less than 1%. And typically, the lower the load factor, the higher the average cost per unit. And so what we see is that this, these public EV charging stations so far, again, because they aren't being used a lot, are load fact, are low load factor usages. And I'll go into some specific details in just a minute on that. But it's important to note also that SUA pays its wholesale supplier, GRDA, which you were discussing earlier, based in part on maximum system peak during a month. So to the extent that your customers directly add to your peak usage, SUA is incurring marginal variable costs because of that extra usage. And so I think these three factors suggest the need for a demand rate as part of a tariff. Whereas, you know, people who are implementing at-home EV charging rates often aren't looking at that because most EV charging that's done at home is done overnight, people get home and plug their cars in. So when we get to our proposed rate, I want to note that cost of service-based rate for this is impractical just because there aren't enough customers and there's not enough usage to develop enough of a class to look at the costs and assign the costs and, because the amount of the usage to the ratio of the cost just isn't there. Now, that doesn't mean that the rate that we're proposing is not cost of service-based. It is, and you'll see when we get to the individual components of the rate, how they are tied to other cost of service-based rates that SUA already has. So I'll start, so we're proposing a three-part rate with a customer charge, a demand charge and an energy charge. This will be the same type of rate that your larger customers are already on. So what we're proposing is a customer charge of $35 a month. This is higher than the general service rate that these customers are already on, which is $18.04, but it is much, much lower than SUA's current lowest demand-based customer rate, which is $226.88. We propose a demand charge of $9.53 per kilowatt-month for all months. That's the same rate that the current power and light secondary, that secondary refers to voltage, demand charge for winter months. And we're saying both, we recommend both this lower customer charge as well as this demand charge at the lower rate for all 12 months of the year, even though other people who are on similar rates pay an extra roughly $2 a month in summer months, in recognition of the fact that public EV charging is something that's in the city of Stillwater and the utilities' interest in that it promotes, you know, usage of public facilities, parks and local businesses. So whenever you see a rate with a demand charge, the trade-off is that the energy charge is much lower. And so we're proposing an energy charge of just over 5.5 cents per kilowatt-hour. And again, that's the same rate as the current power and light secondary energy charge and is much, much lower than the nearly 12.9 cents that these customers are currently paying on the general service rate. And like all SUA rates, you know, the PCA and taxes would also apply. And so now we get to, you know, whoops, I went the wrong way, hit the wrong button. What is the effect on customers is a question I could imagine that you might have. And again, it's difficult to extrapolate too far just because there's so little usage on these meters right now, but we'll go through it anyway. So only one customer of those four installations that has been done has had sufficient usage on the charging station to analyze the rate effect. So what we did was we took data from the last five months and really what we saw was that only one of those meters had usage on it during the first three months of 2020. So, you know, the idea is that for most of that, you're sort of talking pre-coronavirus into maybe the very start of some of the effects of that. But what we see is that one meter where there is enough data to sort of use, is that the load factor has ranged from 3.4% to 6% during those first three months of the year. So by most utility standards, that, those are very low load factors. And the average electric rate that has been paid has ranged between 16 cents and 18 cents. And again, the current general service rate, if you ignore taxes and the PCA, which is very small right now, but nonexistent, what that really is, is that's the $18 and change customer charge and then the 12.9 cents energy charge. And so really where that average rate falls is a function of how much energy they're using. The more energy you use, the more you're gonna be closer to that 13 cent average energy rate as you're dividing that $18 customer charge over more units. And so I think that, again, at usage levels like this, you need to look at both the average rate and the total dollars. And so the total bill has ranged between $89 and $155. So the question then becomes, at this new rate, what would this look like? And what we would see is an average electric rate of, at the new EV charging rate of 35 cents to 56 cents per kilowatt-hour. Now, those are high numbers, you know, compared to where we've been. And the total bill at the new rate would range from $197 to $420. But I feel strongly, and we've worked with staff and I think they agree as well, that this rate, including the demand component, and it is the demand component that is leading to these higher average rates per unit and the total dollar amount, it represents the fact that SUA made these large investments, $83,000, in service to serve these four stations as well as the fact that you had to build it out to take that maximum demand that that charging station might need, even if it's not using it much of the time, SUA has to be ready to serve it whenever it uses that. And that's what a demand-based charge is meant to recognize. So then the question might, you might say, well then, what could, could the owner of those charging stations do to reduce its average cost? And the answer, you know, is probably apparent, is to increase usage. And so then we ask the question, well, how much would usage need to increase to get the average rate back to that 16 to 18 cents per kilowatt-hour rate? And what you, what we're saying is that you would need to increase the load factor from where it's been, that 3.5 to 6% to a range of 17 to 22%. And so what that really means is you would need to increase usage about four to five times where it is right now to get to that same average rate. And a load factor of 17 to 22%, I mean, that's still saying that, you know, the facility is getting used about one hour out of every five. It's not, we're not saying you gotta get the cars lined up using it every hour to get there, because that wouldn't really be feasible. But I think it's a reasonable expectation and it's, again, more appropriately aligned with cost causation. And if usage were to go higher than that 17 to 22 cents range, the average rate per kilowatt-hour would actually be lower than what they're paying right now. So I think that's important to note as well. So with that... So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and when we're done with questions, I know that Mr. Smith has had the recommendation to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Trustees, any questions about the rate study?
I guess my major, one major question is how valid are the usage or load statistics given COVID over the, over the last three months?
Sure. So, the three-month period that was used to, to develop the analysis I just talked about was January, February, and March. So, we weren't looking at March, April, and May because that, that would not be useful.
Right. But even January, February, and March are not high-driving months.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I, you know, I, it, 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 to be honest, it's the only data we had.
Well, it's to the benefit, then. It's, it may, you could perhaps assume that it would be, it's going to be fairly quick to get the 17 to 22% increase in usage.
So, so I would say the things that would increase usage would be, one, you know, more public awareness of the fact that these facilities are out there. Two, more people buying electric vehicles, which, you know, most energy industry people say is, is something that's going to happen. Now, lower gas prices the last few months are probably not helping that cause for a lot of people, but I think that, that, you know, longer term, I think that there's still going to be more electric vehicles on the roads. And I think those are the two main factors that will drive increased usage of these facilities.
Anything further, trustees?
When you say customer, David, you mean the person who owns the charging station, not a person who's driving a car?
I'm trying to remember the context of when I said customer, but when I've been talking about customer in the presentation, I've been talking about the owner of the charging station.
Right.
How, David, do these rates compare? Statewide, nationwide? Do you have any sense of that?
You know, public EV charging rates, a lot of, a lot of utilities actually don't create a separate class for it, but rather put them on a sort of usually the lowest cost or the lowest voltage demand-based rate that's out there. I think that, that what, what we proposed for Stillwater is, is appropriate given where these facilities are in their life cycle, because I think that to impose a $226 a month customer charge for these stations that aren't seeing any usage, you know, it wouldn't really be tenable. But I think that if you want to look at where other utilities are, you know, you're seeing things more like that. And, and so, the idea is that you need to have, the idea is that you need to have demand sort of lined up and ready to go before you plan to put one of these in, where you're going to be facing a tough economic picture.
Do you, I mean, how many, I, I don't know if you, you may have mentioned this earlier, but what, what like total number of cars charged at these four stations in that three-month period?
Based on the data we have, we can only see the kilowatt hour usage and the total, the, the peak demand, the sort of highest usage. So, we can't, we can't, and we could infer some things, but in fact, when I put together the analysis, what I said was, you know, assuming that it was, that all the usage was based on electric vehicle charging as opposed to keeping a light on or lighting up a screen or something like that. If, if you made that assumption, the equivalent sales across all four of those, those chargers would be the equivalent of selling about 320 gallons of gasoline, assuming an average of 30 miles a gallon, so a total of 9,600 passenger miles. So, you know, in the grand scheme of things, not a whole lot.
Mm-hmm, okay. Anything further, trustees? We appreciate the work, David, and the presentation, and Lauren, you have a recommendation for us on this?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve resolution number SUA 2020-3.
Trustees, further discussion or is there a motion?
I thought Lauren just made it.
He was suggesting that someone else make that motion.
Motion to accept SUA 2020-3.
Second.
We have a motion from vice chair Darlington and a second from trustee Jaloski to adopt resolution 2020-3. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zenati?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yep.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, resolution 2020-3 is adopted. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, David. Appreciate you guys being here. That takes us to item 6B, resolution SUA 2020-4. This is the companion resolution to the one we passed in city council regarding payment plans and reinstatement of disconnections. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number SUA 2020-4.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Wedlake and a second by trustee Zenati. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zenati?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, SUA 2020-4 is adopted. Takes us to item 6C, resolution 2020-5, a resolution amending the Stillwater, city of Stillwater Convenience Collection Center rate structure. Chris Knight is here to present a resolution for a 20-cent charge on motor oil. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm glad you hung around for this.
No, it's been a long night for you, so I will, I'll go quickly. Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. The Waste Management Department oversees the Convenience Collection Center at 807 South Perkins Road. The center accepts many things to be recycled. One of those is used motor oil. We have always collected or collected the, the used motor oil from the citizens for free, and we've always had been able to have a company come collect it for free. We've recently been notified that it will, we're now going to be charged for them to come get the oil. And with our current company, that charge comes to 20 cents per gallon for them to come collect the oil. I did call numerous other companies, and our current company is by far the cheapest fee for collecting that oil. So, I'm here tonight. We have three options. We can continue to accept the motor, used motor oil at the collection center for free and start budgeting the disposal. Or we can stop collecting the used motor oil. Or we can continue to collect the used motor oil, but start charging 20 cents per gallon just to cover our cost.
How, um, how are you going to, I mean, sometimes I take my motor oil over there in quartz. But I guess if I just bring you quartz, a quartz to recycle, are you going to charge me 5 cents?
Yes, I mean, yes. For the quartz. What I kind of see is we're going to, we'll get some, some containers that equal a gallon, you know, for the people who bring in more than that, or different types of containers.
Yeah.
If you just bring in a quartz, then yes, we would just charge you 5 cents for the quartz.
So, if I do bring it in a five-gallon bucket, you know, is there going to be like, are you guys going to have to measure it and figure out exactly how much is in there, or?
Yes.
Just going to play it by ear?
We'll try to measure it the best we possibly can, but I mean, I'm assuming there will be a little guesswork.
Sure.
Could you do it by weight?
Yeah, we could.
How much does, how much does a gallon of oil weigh?
We could. We do have a scale down there, so that's a possibility.
What's the weight of the jug?
Pouring oil all over the place.
Right.
Is this something, Chris, that, that you think other, like, sometimes I take mine to Walmart or to Autozone, and they usually take it for free? Do you think other places are going to start charging?
Well, yeah, I, I did call around to Quick Loop places, and usually they get, are paid for their oil because they have a large volume. Ours is a lot smaller, smaller than what they have. And they told me that now they are being charged for companies to come get their oil.
Okay. Trustees, is there a further discussion, or? It looks like your, the staff recommendation is to go ahead and just charge the 20 cents, correct?
Yes, that is our recommendation.
Trustees, is there a motion on this one?
Motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion from vice chair Darlington and a second from trustee Jaloski to approve resolution SUA 2020-5, adopting a 20 cent per gallon charge for used motor oil. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zenati?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, SUA 2020-5 is adopted. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Dorman, any announcements or reports?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Reams?
Anything to report?
Trustees, is there a motion to adjourn?
I did want to just make a note that I talked to Melissa earlier about the renewable task force that was going to be starting in April. And Melissa, I think you said, first meeting in July?
What I indicated was we had 12 applicants, and that as soon as we can start having committees and boards meet, we would ask the, the mayor to go through the appointment process and get that group going.
Okay, I forgot what you said.
Yeah, we have a few appointments on different committees that are sort of sitting out there that I need to take care of. So, we'll look at either getting those on the agenda for next meeting or the meeting in July.
Okay.
Because we can, you know, potentially get them appointed even if they can't meet right away.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By the sound of my kids, we better adjourn quick.
My, my face is getting dark. The sun is setting.
Not sure who made that motion.
I did, Amy.
Motion, motion to adjourn by trustee Jaloski and a second by trustee Wedlake. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zenati?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. Thank you. We don't have another agenda, right? That's it? We're done? Thank you guys for being here.
To our next meeting, aren't we?
Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, all.